Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City School District Special Board Meeting and Work Session, March 8, 2021. I would like to open the meeting this evening with roll call. Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. King?
Here.
Mr. Jubey? Ms. Morrison?
Here.
Thank you. The first order of business, I would like to take a motion to appoint Shawn Patton as treasurer pro top.
So moved.
Second.
With that being moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas, I'm going to take the roll call on that and that will be Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
And Ms. Daniels also votes yes. And with that vote and Mr., I turn the meeting over to Mr. Patton.
Okay, the next item is the adoption of agenda items.
Can we also have prior to us moving forward with the meeting, I would like to apologize to the public. We are actually on Zoom this evening versus being in person and streaming live from the little theater. And if Ms. Bailey can share with the public the reasons for that this evening, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, thank you, Mrs. Davis, Daniels, sorry. So today unfortunately there was an internet outage with our ITC, our internet provider with, they are called Connect. Regionally, there are many, many school districts that use them to provide their internet. So this was an outage that was regional. It had to do with their firewall. They were having a problem with it that was causing sites to, some sites to work, some sites to not, particularly the Google sites were not working. So a remind message was sent out to all the families because students, of course, those that were still at home weren't able to connect to their teachers at school. So it was resolved about a little bit before four and they're still working to identify exactly what the problem was and what caused it so they can rectify it.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey for that update. And to move forward with our agenda this evening, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patton, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas, roll call please.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. With that being approved, I would like a motion to enter into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patton, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. King, can I have roll call please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At 5:36 PM, we are going into executive session for the purposes of discussing GHTA negotiations and personnel matters. Ms. Bailey, if you can move us into executive session? Thank you.
Okay. Hi, Mrs. Bailey, I think I'm on the agenda to present in the executive session. I never received a copy of the agenda to know where I should be.
Okay. Do I need to announce that we adjourned the meeting at six oh three publicly?
You just did.
Yes.
I know if there were.
The next item on our agenda this evening is a present, a presentation by Yolanda Hamilton. Mr. Hanky, would you like to introduce Ms. Hamilton and explain the presentation and all of that stuff for us?
Certainly Ms. Daniels and I'll make very quick mention real quick and thank you to all the parents and students today was awesome. And then we can talk about that a little bit at the other meeting, but it was so nice to see all of the faces back at school. Anyway, I'll leave that there. We're going to turn into and go to something as positive, I think. Ms. Hamilton has been working with us as our diversity, equity and inclusion consultant. For this is the second school year, right, Ms. Hamilton? Yeah, so we have done some expansion of programming and also we did a lot of unique programming for Black History Month. We have an equity test with a lot of good, good, good news and good things going on in our district. With diversity, equity and inclusion, Ms. Hamilton has been integral and a great part of our team. So with that, we did invite her to give an update and all of our efforts and I, 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 I'm happy and to turn it over to her. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the board for having me this evening. I would like to ask at this time if Ms. Bailey can prompt the PowerPoint and I can just prompt you to change slides if that's okay? Just to alleviate logistics around.
So I did give you permission to share it. Did you just email it to me? My apologies.
Okay.
Do you want to, let me just, I can pull up my email. Hold on. I don't know what I'm doing. I think I shared something by accident. Hold on.
No problem. So pretty much tonight, I wanted to be able to share some pertinent updates with everyone in the district around the work that we've been doing on this journey to really advance diversity, equity and inclusion within our district. To Mr. Hanky's point, I've been with the district a little over a year going into two years and it's just really amazing at the amount of work and momentum that we've been, the pace that we've been moving at even in the midst of COVID. And so I know that those updates are not always, haven't been shared as of yet on the website. But we're doing our best to make sure that families and individuals in the community can stay abreast to those things that we are doing. Miss, no problem. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bailey. Okay, and will I have, I have the capability to transition between slides?
Actually, I'll do that for you. So just let me know when.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, of course, this is what I just titled as the diversity, equity and inclusion report for the 2020-21 school year. Next slide, please. And so so we convened an equity task force in July of 2020 and that task force was formed per initiated by our superintendent, Mr. Chris Hanky. And the task force is actually formed as a subcommittee of the board and what we really do is we bring together individuals across the district to really apply an equity lens through all of the work that we are doing. And so we came up with a consensus around how we define educational equity because that is our primary focus as members of the Equity Task Force. And we define educational equity by stating that it means that all students should have access to the right resources that they need at the right moment in their education regardless of their race, gender, sexual orientation, disability, ethnicity, language, religion, family or family income. And that is consistent with as educational equity is defined by the Aspen Institute. The members, as you see on the slide, consists of Ms. Nichelle Daniels, President of the Board, Mr. Chris Hanky, Dr. Gordon Dupree, Ms. Gina Wilson, Ms. Carla Saunders and myself. Next slide, please. So this is just an outline infographic of the journey for our equity framework. So we mapped this out over the course of phases for this particular academic year. So again, as I mentioned, we can, we started by forming the Equity Task Force because we needed to bring together core members of the district to get the ball rolling. As we evolved into the second phase, it really began growing in the sense of learning how to apply equity lens to address all the gaps that we were discovering, particularly those gaps that were exaggerated as a result of the pandemic. And so we, everything from the digital divide, accessing to technology, access to internet, those were all things that we really began taking an intricate look at and coming up with solutions as to how as a district we could make sure that our students were being served in the midst of this. We're still having an equitable lens at addressing some of the issues due to COVID, but now we are transitioning to look at the equity gaps as in a broader scope, but also keeping in mind those things that arose as a result, excuse me, of COVID-19. The next phase that we're transitioning to was to reduce communication barriers and so we came up with some ideas around town halls and just really conducting surveys with parents without necessarily making assumptions about how parents receive communication, but really getting the understanding of what are those preferred communication channels? And how can we ensure that we're having multiple communication channels to keep parents abreast of and up to date with the information as it was rapidly changing, as we all know during the course of this school year? The next phase was consisting of professional development. So we wanted to make sure that our educators were supported. We understand that the dynamic of being in class versus virtual is very different. And being virtual for this school year, there were many things that happened in our society, which we knew teachers needed to be equipped with the necessary skills to feel comfortable in initiating those conversations around social justice and things that were happening that impact our students as well. The next phase consisted of coming together to really figure out what was some culturally relevant programming that we can implement in the midst of being virtual, right? Because the dynamic of parent night outs and things of that nature, we had to be creative and think about how we could shape meaningful programming to keep parents engaged. And then our last phase consists of conducting a district-wide effort for an equity audit, which is the first time that we're actually embarking upon doing an equity audit for the district at large. The next slide, please. So with the equity framework, these were some components that were to provide you with additional details. The assessment of the equity gaps, so we talked about what those needs were for students and families, but also teachers as well. In informing that process, we created an equity rubic to really help us to guide different components and considerations for the process of the school reopenings. And we really focused on the most vulnerable population and those being individuals with learning differences and disabilities, as well as the homeless population and other vulnerable populations as classified in our district. We prioritize addressing communication gaps and really other aspects of supporting social, emotional learning and mental health. Really collaborating more with community partners because we needed all hands on deck to make sure that our students and families were being served. And then providing again that inclusion training and culturally relevant programming. Next, please. The next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so as it relates to communication, some of the strategies that we applied the town halls. So we created a forum so that parents could have access to real-time updates consisting from administrators, including Mr. Hanky and the team of administrators throughout the district, as well as having access to engage with agencies that provide direct services for our students in the school buildings. And so those include agencies such as Applewood, Beechbrook and a plethora of other agencies. And again, those were opportunities that weren't necessarily afforded to parents without coming on site to the school building, right? So it gave us the opportunity to kind of cast a larger net to share that information with students across our district. Thus, we saw an increase in parent and family participation and referrals that were made directly to Ms. Wilson, our family engagement coordinator, as well as Dr. Dupree, our Director of Student and Pupil Services. And learning more just about parent needs, because we understood that with the impact of the pandemic, there were so many needs that we just weren't considering. And so conducting parent surveys, we saw a significant increase in real-time responses. And it allowed us to be able to address those parent concerns and to provide support. We also figured, hey, we need to really cast our nets wider in how we communicate with parents. And so we really did our best to try to ensure that the district was using multiple channels of communication from doing the district-wide callbacks to text messaging, social media updates, emails and even phone calls. And also engaging more with our community partners, which was really helpful in helping us to be able to have a couple of learning pods to support virtual learners and those that were not virtual, but remote learners that still require that extra support. Next slide, please. Thank you. Professional development. We had all of our educators and staff that work with children directly go through some equity training, particularly around navigating, creating brave space for difficult workplace conversations. And we really touched on helping educators to understand what are microaggressions, what are implicit biases? How does that impact the way that educators or direct staff engages with our students? And why some of those behaviors are harmful and strategies to apply to help overcome personal bias in the way that it shows up in the classroom? We will continue in that vein with providing more trainings of that nature for our educators to ensure that we are making our best efforts to reduce and eliminate bias in the way of our delivery of instruction in the classroom setting. Also, we are in the process of establishing equity action teams in each buildings and that will consist of individuals from each building who we consider as being our diversity champions. They will recommend the type of training and support that's needed, you know, since they're doing the work daily. And we want to be able to support and engage our educators in this process as well. And then again, ongoing equity training throughout the course of the year, identifying what is going to be prioritized as it relates to enhancing the understanding of equity amongst educators and our staff within the district. Next slide, please. So culturally relevant programs. As Mr. Hanky mentioned, we were able to really do some robust programming during this Black History Month. And again, working with collaborative partners throughout across the community to make sure that we were incorporating, you know, representation and particularly working with the Cleveland Association of Black Storytelling and really, really going above and beyond to ensure that this was a rich programming to engage students and families. We also had the opportunity to connect with an out-of-state partner for some virtual field trips because we know that that's another area that our students were missing out on is the opportunity to take field trips outside of the district in the midst of COVID. So they were able to participate in rhythm and revolution. And then we are planning for our DI Week programs, which we hope to even take it up a notch from last year, which we saw a lot of success. This also involved us creating media messages via video, right? And so some of you may have seen on the website how we were able to engage members in our district with messaging around Black History Month. And in addition, it's just important, you know, for our students and families to see that representation. Next slide, please. So that leads us to the last phase of the equity framework for this academic year. And that consists of our equity audit. And so I just wanted to share, you know, what is an equity audit? When we say that, when we use the terms, we really want to start having a consistent and common language throughout the school district so that everyone understands what we mean when we say equity or refer to the equity audit. And I really liked this language, this definition that's in plain language, which simply states that goal of the equity audit is to identify institutional practices that produce discriminatory trends in data and how that affects students. And so in essence, that is exactly what we're doing. That is exactly what we use the data to identify. And even before going through with the audit, we know and are aware that there are gaps, right? Achievement gaps and things of that nature. It's not to preach to us what we already know as a district, but to help us to look more intricately at those gaps and just really figure out some solutions and opportunities to help reduce that gap. Next slide, please. Okay, so part of the equity audit will help us tie in again, our equity, our inclusion training and those aspects on an organizational level. So from the assessment piece, we'll be able to have an assessment and analyzation of the data to really be able to identify what are the systemic practices that have had an impact on these data outcomes? So that will be divided into two categories into how does that manifest in, in our organization and in the service of delivery and the impact? And then leading down to having an awareness and better understanding of that, it should help us as a district to better create anti-bias practices, bias-reducing practices built on transparency standards and accountability, also referred to as TSA. And those are standards across the board for any district throughout the United States that's looking to develop these standards in their district-wide practices. Next slide, please. So the equity audit phase is reviewing equity assets and challenges. So that's pretty So that's pretty much compiling all of the comprehensive data. And the, the board members who are on, um, the meeting tonight. You have copies that were sent over to you, particularly of the equity rubric for the reopening process. As well as the equity audit phases. So, if I can just draw your attention briefly just to reference, and I know the general public can't see these documents, but I will describe them the best way that I can. The equity rubric, um, we were able to identify specific categories as it related to the most vulnerable populations. Individuals across departments, whether it was intervention, um, teachers, et cetera, were able to take a look at the equity rubric and rate. Where we fall in that category. So I believe out of a score of thirty-two, we rated ourselves at a twenty-six, which is pretty good. Um, and it allowed us to see what areas of focus we needed to prioritize as it relates to the reopening process. For the equity audit phases, the document, if you can reference that. It simply demonstrates the different categories that we are looking at and conducting this audit. It consists of everything from demographics to student performance to socioeconomic status. Um, disaggregating data around free, reduced lunch and discipline data. And I just want to say, um, it really is taking a team effort to get the audit completed. And I wanted to just mention an acknowledgement to Ms. Bailey, our Director of Technology. And our EMIS Coordinator, who have been very intricate in making sure that all of that data. Um, was submitted in a timely fashion. It's not an easy feat. And we were a- actually able to, um, complete this over a four-week process, process, um, excuse me, a four-week process. So. Kudos and thank you so much as you're working, um, as a team. It's a team effort to make sure that we were able to meet those, um, deadlines. The second phase will consist of developing a theory of action. And what that in essence means is that. We want to get to a point where we're building a common language and common understanding. Sometimes for districts, particularly those that are not really. Um, in the vein of always looking at data, it can be a little intimidating when you look at data and putting language behind like, what does this really mean when we look at these graphs and trends? So we really want to create common language and understanding so that. Anyone in our district who sees this data or is informed, they're able to articulate what this data actually means in plain language. And then we want to use the, the data to help us to develop and implement an equity improvement plan. So addressing those gaps and issues and using that data to really see the transformational change that we desire within the Garfield High School District. So, in essence, that is a highlight, um, of our equity journey that we've been on this year. Just sharing with you and transparency where we are, where we, where we started from, where we are and where we're headed. So at this time, if any members of the board or anyone has questions, I'd be happy to address those at this time. Any questions or comments?
Um, just a comment. I think you, um, and the team have done a thorough job and. Um, a lot of what I was writing down, I think are more next steps. Um, you know, as we incorporate the findings from the equity audit, um, into our strategic plan. So I am definitely looking forward to, um, ramping it up and taking it to the le- next level. So thank you for your, your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. King. And we will schedule, um, an opportunity outside of the, um, Equity Task Force for the board to be updated. Um, I'm working closely with our community partner from ESC, the Educational Service Center. Who has really, um, been so helpful and helping us to drive this process forward. So. I'm excited by the work. We're moving in a good direction. And again, it's been a, a, a great experience. Um, with the synergy with our Equity Task Force and working with other departments across our district. So thank you.
Yeah, I can definitely second what Ms. King said. Um, you guys have done an amazing job and it was really nice to hear. And see all of the initiatives that you guys have put into place in one place all combined. Cause we see these things, you know, every week and, and so to see all of those things together, um, really. It was really nice to see all of the work that you guys have done with, um, diversity and equity in- inclusion in our district. So thank you, Ms. Hamilton, for all of your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton, I also, um, would like to, um, hold the same sentiments as Ms. King and Ms. Thomas. Um. You along with, um, the leadership of Mr. Hanky. Um, you guys are really moving the district forward. Um, in equity and diversity. And, um, I'm really proud of the work that you guys have done so far. And I'm also, um, looking for, um, just as Ms. King said, um, the district are ramping it up. Um. I do, I just would like for you to share with, um, the, um, cause I do know a little bit because I sit on the Equity Task Force. Um, how we got to the point and how we were chosen to actually participate in this equity audit that we're doing now.
Okay, so, um, we are a part of a more collaborative network that is called the Equity Network, which is a part of the Educational Service Center. If you all know, the Educational Service Center works with different districts across Northeast Ohio. And for those that have someone like similar to my role. We all sit on that as colleagues and we talk about different challenges that each district is having. Eh, eh, this looks different in each district, right? And so from that, um, under the leadership of Michael Corey and Chris Pelfrey. We were just have, you know, one of the districts that are a part of the Equity Network and we were, um, basically offered the opportunity to participate in this. The cool thing about it is that the framework is pretty much consistent across the board, even though we know that the challenges that each district faces is different. But many of our other, um, inner ring suburbs are also participating in this, um, process. So it kind of gives us, you know, similarities in terms of understanding. For example, if Mr. Hanky were to have discussions with superintendents of other districts and they're referencing their equity audits, there's a similar framework, right? So some of those districts who are involved include like Bad, um, Bedford Heights, Maple Heights. Brush, um, the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School District, Shaker Heights School District. And then you also have Rocky River and Fairview Park who are, who are part of this. So it's just interesting how, um, a lot of the work that we are doing and putting in action falls right into place of what we talk about in our Equity Network. So that just speaks volumes. And really my goal in, in my duration with the district, I want Garfield Heights to be a model district for how we advance equity. So that is our goal. It seems like a very big goal, but that is my goal. Um, to really help support the work of the leadership in the district to make us a model district of how we apply equity. And that is not just something that looks good on paper, but is actually connected to the actions of what we are doing throughout our district. So again, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to be working and serving with the school district under the leadership of the board as well as, um. Ms. Daniels and Mr. Hanky and pretty much giving me the opportunity to just. Blow and make recommendations as needed. And again, um, we'll be looking to add to our Equity Task Force. Starting off, we started with a small core group, but we will be looking to engage other departments such as intervention. Because we understand that as we're evolving and growing, we have to, you know, start including other departments, but because of. The nature of the pandemic and, and needing to just kind of hit the ground running. And that's exactly what we did. We started off with the cor- the core group of people as recommended by Mr. Hanky, but. I look forward to the expansion. I look forward to what we're doing and to see how far we are a year from now. And, um, again, thank you for the opportunity.
I just had, um, two, um, quick comments. Um, one thing, um, well, just one comment. I would love to see a parent survey. Based on equity, um, just to see the changes that we have made. I know we talked a lot about, um. Our communication style with our parents. Um, and so I would love to see a survey. To see and hear how our parents feel about, you know, the different resources that we've been able to provide for them, especially during COVID. I think we would, we would see some really good results.
Ms. Thomas, thank you for reminding me because I forgot to mention a parent survey is a part of our equity, um, audit process. And so as of. I think it was February, maybe nineteenth, when I checked in, we had two hundred and ninety-seven respondents, family respondents from our district, which, um. ESC was, the ESC was very impressed by that. So that lets me know that we had a good participation. And what's interesting is that I, I got to take a preview of the data and I don't want to do a spoiler alert, but. It was very, um, refreshing to see some of the data and what parents' perceptions were. About how we've been communicating them and with them and, and their perceptions. We were able to gather demographic data from them. So it was a list of, um, questions. I think the survey probably was five minutes or less. But, um, to have two hundred and ninety-seven respondents. And again, it may be more than that. I haven't circled back with. Uh, Michael Corey, but it's a part of that and that will be shared as part of the, um, the data sharing when we're, when we wrap it up.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else for me? Okay, well, thank you again. I'll log off now. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you.
I think, thank you, Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Hanky for the efforts, um, and establishing that task force for the district. And, um, just like the other board members, we are, um, in great anticipation to see, um, the outcomes. Um. Based upon the goals that have been set with the Equity Task Force. Um, the next item on our agenda is discussion, um, relative to the tentative agenda. Um, if all of the board members receive and have an opportunity to review our tentative agenda.
Yes.
Is there any questions, um, or any discussion relative to the agenda, um, as submitted, um, tentatively?
Can I, uh, just, uh, if, if I may, Mrs. Daniels, you mind if I chime in real quick? Uh, just.
Absolutely.
You know, and every year, the calendar, right? We, we want to make sure that we, we, we have, we have, uh, the calendar ready. Um, there was a couple of, um, uh, minor tweaks, uh, based on feedback and also based on. You know, making sure we were in line with our contracts and things that are, are union or, or negotiated agreements and things like that. So. Um, but generally, you know, you start out with some goals and one of them was to move things a little bit later in August, which I think we accomplished. Um, we did, we did have the discussion, you know, with the board about late Arrival Thursdays, um. Uh, not happening next year. Um, yeah, but, um, you know, it, it, it again is a, um. Pretty standard calendar. Um, I think we were able to accomplish everything we wanted to accomplish in terms of days and. You know, making sure breaks were as equitable as possible and things of that nature. So.
Ms. King, do you have any comments or discussion relative to the tentative agenda?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas, do you have any questions or discussion?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Morrison, do you have any, uh, questions or discussion relative to the agenda?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, with there being no other questions or discussions rel- relative. To the tentative agenda for the March fifteenth regular board meeting. Um, I will, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Slow move. Second.
Mr. Patton, that motion was, the motion to, um, adjourn was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. King. Can you take a roll call for me, please?
Yes. Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
And we just need a time, Mrs. Daniels.
Yep, um, the meeting is adjourned at six thirty-six PM. Our next board meeting is on March, Monday, March fifteenth. Yeah, that meeting will be streamed live on our YouTube, um, channel. You can find that link on our website. Um, thank you guys for your participation this evening. And this meeting is officially adjourned.
Thank you, you guys.